Mute, okay, so we're still having issues. Hold on.
Maybe nine, up to nine.
Am I unmuted? Okay, so.
Seven, maybe?
Well, can we?
Yeah.
We need to get this, let's get the speaker replaced in the next two weeks. Can we do that? Because when I've, he thumbs up. I love it. And here's why. Because when I go back and listen to it later, you can hear me, you hear this guy, you hear this guy, and everyone else, the further out they go, the quieter, exactly. When it's, so right now, we're using the microphone on my laptop. That one's, that one's on the Fritz. That's true too, but it's also, you know, all right here.
We were supposed to replace the whole system.
Yeah, let's at least do the microphone by next meeting. Okay, what else was there? Did anyone, did someone have a question?
I, did I just ask you about where we stand, why we weren't catching and what?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, and I'll, and I'll get you, I'll get clarification.
Isn't going to cover the cost of nine.
No, it'll be more like, like the equipment alone will probably be, all of them, absolutely all of them, yep. At the same time, yep.
Another unbudgeted item.
Wow. Don't shoot the messenger.
You're just lucky she's not here.
Yeah, he can, she can, she can scally me all she wants, don't shoot the message. As the old proverb goes, don't shoot the messenger. Just, no, no. Same one that I said 10 times already. Okay, so that concludes my.
Any other questions for the mayor? If you would update us somewhere in between our two meetings.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do we know the date in October?
October fourteenth. Is that when it is?
I don't think we, well, we do have a voting meeting and a caucus meeting if necessary.
But we should, you're absolutely right, we could do it in the next two weeks.
Council meeting.
Approved, because then it's going to take a couple of weeks to get it done, so. Okay. And it's our forensic, our, our.
Whatever they.
IT service.
Don't, don't forget to double whatever.
Are not to blame for this, because they've been trying to get me to get back to them on all this, so I will, I have it on my list, hopefully for tomorrow.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For that unfortunate.
I know.
Mr. White, Borough Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope everyone has noticed the LED sign is up and running.
I did notice that it was up and running.
I already have the jug take back in East Cyclone, it's already scheduled, it's not going to pop up until the scheduled date, but already on there. Building is, looks great inside, police department has already moved over to their side. We're probably at ninety-five percent, there's some brickwork that has to be done. Hopefully in the next two weeks, we're going to be getting the wall raised around the outdoor mechanical stuff. So when they do that, they're going to be putting some type of, probably an orange fence all the way around just to keep the kids away. I'm trying to get pricing right now, I called three different companies for a handrail along the backside of the building, and we need a gate, because there's actually, there's an opening to get into the outdoor mechanical room. And we're a little nervous about just kids playing hide and seek or hiding or doing whatever back there, so.
We also need a gate at the end of the walkway going onto the grasses and emergency exit.
As a egress area.
Go both directions, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And that's really all I have unless somebody asks a question.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Is that raised with a Z or raised with an AI? As is it going down?
No, it's going to be, it's going to be extended upward.
The building?
The wall's going up higher.
The wall right now, and I watched it today, because it was the first day where someone's sitting on it, that we're going up.
Said ranged, I'm like.
Yeah, right, it could go, in this context, it could go either way. Raised like R A Z E D like.
That were drawn originally, the height of the wall is where it was, but they didn't depict that there was going to be all the mechanical.
And though I had to explain in that.
So when they put that in, they were like, wait a second. And that's why we're having them bring it up higher, so that it's not visible, also better protection, because right now, somebody can crawl over that pretty easily.
Becomes a C.
We have.
Hidden area.
It is a hidden, it's a.
I was just about to say, we're, right?
And wait till the walls up and then we'll talk about.
Suggested this, and I, and I laughed, but then I said, actually, that's true. We should put like a sticker bush under some of these windows, like your current office window, I think. You don't want, if you just do bushes, presumably the children may, you know, play around and.
If you guys remember when we did the assess, risk assessment from the state police.
Yes.
They do not want bushes around places like that, because it gives someone a place to hide.
Oh.
Remember, everything they do, it's worst case scenario.
Uh huh, okay.
No sticker bushes.
For you and you, I don't want people knocking on the walls. You're going to be on, you're on the other side, yeah.
Stay.
I can't even reach those.
Thanks for the. You don't have a regular window?
Yeah.
In your new office?
It's up hot.
Oh, no, I guess, maybe, was that a security thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, match is also aesthetic in the windows and.
Sorry, chief.
So I know.
You get to look at the clouds.
The Vice President, has any other questions for the Borough Manager, Mr. Mr. Borders?
Where they break up the old entrance? You can kind of still see the outline of the old Portico door there or whatever. Will that be like pressure washed off or something?
No, I was actually going to ask the boosters if they were volunteering their time to get up and power wash and brush. So since you brought it up.
Poor boosters.
I, I have access to brick cleaning acid, but I don't know if that would be sufficient enough to take it all off. At some point, it would be worth an effort.
That's a forty year old lines that you see, so.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if that was part of the renovation or.
What do you mean, cleaning it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Is it expensive to just?
Well, that's why I'm looking for the free labor.
Well, that's very inexpensive.
When I asked that question. And I know there is some type of brick cleaners out there, so, was it like an acid, Dan?
I'm not sure how much of the stain it will take off, but we can work on that. Any other questions? I, I know that we are, our Vice President has been asking about when we're going to do an open house, I don't want to do it till we're complete, and there's apparently something that's going to take eight weeks to come in, what is it?
So on yesterday's meeting, it is the detention furniture, which would be the interview investigation, the process and the two benches for in both cells. You know, the first benches that they ordered were way too small, it was like forty-two inches, and when I talked to Steve, he said they had to be much bigger, and I brought it to their attention, and instead of arguing back and forth about what it should be, I said, just give me a seventy-eight. Because the forty-two wasn't ordered either, it's not like it was there, and so just go to the seventy-eight.
There's a change order in that.
Nah, there's not, believe it or not. So anybody ever six-sixed on the rest? So I can tell you.
So let me ask this question.
Not that we'd be looking to try and.
Not that we have to.
Those would be too tall.
Not that we have to decide on a date right now, but if without those, how complete will, when will the rest of this tech checklist be done?
Two to three weeks.
So let's say the end of September.
Yep.
So when we hold an open house, which we will do.
Yep.
Obviously, we would like the people to be able to see as much of the police department as is legally possible. So we'll have to work out with the chief, and then we'll have to public, we'll send out a notice several weeks in advance, so we're.
We can put it on the sign as well.
We'll send out a mail to everybody, probably some after mid-October, maybe even later, depending on.
Sure.
How nice it looks in the whole thing.
What? So what?
Have a couple of inmates in the cells.
They don't even need masks.
No, right.
But I did ask John that question.
Yeah.
Actually, when I was talking to you the other day, I was outside, and I said, you know, I know we want to do an open house and all that. And the middle of October will be fine, I mean, we really don't need the retention bench or any of that stuff, they'll get the gist of it.
I'm just laughing, because yeah, we could sell the jail, they used to do things about sell jail time back in the day.
What do you, oh, really?
Yeah, you can, you get put in jail, you have to pay for it, they privileged it doing that way back in the day, when I was.
That's funny, that's cute.
I can do visuals, Dan, I'll take a table and two chairs, just for visuals.
Yeah, yeah.
That's.
All right, so we'll, we'll work on that, try and get it, I'll do, I know you told me, and I saw the dumpster was overflowing with the material that the roof was left.
Yep.
The waste that goes on. But there's still debris in that spot, what's going on with that sign that's laying in the parking spot there, is that going to be put back up?
What sign?
There's a sign about, no, do not enter, that's laying on, on the ground, I think that was for the entranceway where they had to move, when they.
We'll get that put up.
Yeah.
I'll have Jeff.
Well, it, and obviously the skid and what's left in there, he couldn't fit anymore in the dumpster, but and my understanding is that you, we had to have the trailer moved, because they had two weeks' notice and they didn't move it.
I gave them five weeks' notice, I wanted it moved for the, the painting of the, for the national night out.
Right.
And when it came to push, came to shove, I said, look, I need this thing totally empty, because I'm striping the lot. And even then, they didn't have it done, so I called, had it moved, and I'm just going to back charge.
Okay.
I didn't give them enough notice.
Anything else in terms of, anything else? I noticed the streets are striped, I guess the paving's going to happen soon? With the, the road program, I noticed those markings.
Yes, it's. It was set for originally September eleventh, and it still could be that, because they wanted to do a pre-con meeting. What you're, you're going to see the street signs go up, letting you know the exact time.
Okay.
But it will be within the next two weeks, I also talked to Jimmy Cleaver today about our pothole issue game, and a couple of little areas, other areas. So he's going to do that, he's, I think, next week, he's going to be on that problem on Glenwood. So when he does this cold patch there, he'll do it at the same time.
Okay.
Is that what, Glenwood and Walnut? Okay.
And as a positive note, it looked to me as if they were marking up Oak Avenue for paving, have you heard anything about that?
I have not, but every Sunday, I don't know if you guys get it, well, it's on the Daily Times, it tells you highways that are works getting done, it was not on there last week.
No, but I know they had the streets partially blocked off, but I was starting to notice, the lines around, so I figured it must be getting worse. Because we have had some people complain about the noise of the.
The plates.
The plates were still in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I thought I saw the the street muncher, you know, the, the milling machine. I thought I saw that sitting over there, and then last week, we had some electric problems in the area and you know, the insurance company had some wires torn down, and I said, oh, the truck took it down, I went, great, it was probably awkward, did that, because they were, I thought they were over there milling and stuff, because they've had Oak Avenue flows, but it wasn't them apparently.
They sub everything out anyway.
All right, thank you very much for the update, any other questions, seeing none, our solicitor, Mr. Coler.
I have, I have nothing, nothing for the group.
You will be getting stuff, I promise, I promise you, they're coming, the Civil Service Commission and.
Except Ron, that we do have both advertised.
Oh, yeah, what status of our, our contracts?
Both are advertised.
They are?
To run to that, yep.
When are they coming back to us for openings?
We, I will receive them on September thirtieth, by noon. We will open them.
By four P M.
By four?
Four P M is what.
Okay, I think I had pretty noon, but if it's four.
That's for the trash and the.
And the snow contracts, so we will open them publicly here on October first.
Are they annual?
Five years.
Five years?
Well, we, didn't we ask for three?
Well, if there's alternatives.
There are, we've been.
Two, three, five. And then if accepted, we will award it on the fifteenth of October.
Okay. That'll help with budgeting as well, very good. Anything else or next thing on, thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. Did our treasurer, who's not here tonight for personal reasons, have any report for us at all? Chief, you're up, sir.
Yes. As we all know, school's back in session, all the schools are back in, Waring Penn started today. I just want to remind everyone, you know, the fifty mile hour school zones throughout different portions of day, all over. Officers have been out, some of the schools were back in last week and stuff, our officers doing day shift have been doing traffic details for school zones. Today, I was out along with the two other uniformed officers, I had one doing school zones, and then myself and another officer were out on foot as we started doing over the last two years during the first couple of days of school on Woodlawn Avenue, trying to educate the parents, handing out.
Do it, yeah.
To not double park.
Right.
Not block driveways, things of that nature. So I usually do that for a few, the few first days of school, then after that, it's just, we just issue citations via mail. We take down the license plates of the cars, this and that, make note of the vehicle, description of the drivers, and then we just mail out citations.
Okay.
At that point, we feel that we give more than enough notice, I know the school sends stuff home as well, and also puts things through their digital notification system about that. I had a few parents, it wasn't too bad today, you know.
Lots of attitude.
Wasn't, you know, even just giving warnings and advising people, there were some arguments back on why not, and when I explained to them that those schools, or a lot of our schools, were made and built back when those schools were localized, and a lot of people walked to school, and we didn't have the amount of busing, an amount of traffic, because a good portion of our students don't live in our community. That there's no easy solution, there's no hundred percent solution. It's like the lesser of the evils, but the school district is responsible for the school, and we are responsible for the street.
Right.
And in years past, we've had accidents, we've had fights, arguments, things of that nature, people get blocked in, so you know, that was my response, they may not necessarily like it, but unfortunately, that's the way it has to be.
People don't actually have to drive their kids to school, do they? I mean, aren't there, isn't there busing? Isn't there busing throughout the district?
There is people that, you know, there's, there's, there's some people in our community that may live way down on Oak or in other areas, and they're not going to have their little kindergarten or first or second grader walk to school, they're going to drive them.
Or no bus.
Yeah, we're, and, and they don't bus in Alden.
They don't bus Alden kids to Alden School.
Correct.
But Yaden and Lansdowne or whatever.
Down Darby.
They would.
Bus, but we also have a contingency of people who drive their kids from those communities.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they don't actually.
Yeah, so.
Right.
You know, it is what it is on that, on that regard, and you know, it's, in years past, every year, we've always had an issue, and it's always switched where the buses were dropping off on Woodlawn, and the parents were dropping off and picking up on the parking. Then the following year, it'd switch, and then we'd switch it back and back and forth, there was no you know, great solution for it, because there's the, the area, the buildings and the, the property around it were not built for that.
Right.
So it, it comes down to managing it the best way we can, so we don't have the issues that we've had in the past. We try to mitigate those, and we, I feel that over the last couple of years, with being out there personally on foot, handing out the literature, having the school hand out the literature, having, there's not too much more we can do at that point. And after that, it just comes down to we issue citations, so.
What's the protocol now for the buses, are they still picking up and dropping off in the parking?
In the parking lot for this year, are we, it, it seems to be that's the safest route.
Yeah.
That's only for students that are going to Alden Elementary, correct? Because the other pickups are now spread out down all.
Right, that is for all the other schools and stuff like that, so. And everything, so it's not, I wish I had an answer, you know, the magic one, I don't.
Are all the cameras working at the intersections?
What's that?
Are all the cameras working at the intersection?
We're, some of them are not, we're, we're still working on that, however, you know, it's one of those things that those cameras are for, they're not catching license plates and things like that.
Major traffic violations, but it's something.
Right, I mean, but we have officers out there. Our officers are assigned to traffic details, unless circumstances arise where they can't attend those details, if there's calls, things of that nature. But every day, our officers are assigned to traffic details, especially in the mornings for school zones, red light violations and stuff like that, we kind of have to move it around a little bit, because we get complaints everywhere on everything, so.
And when you have the first two weeks of school, that's the worst, sometimes.
Yeah, to a degree, to a degree. So, but nevertheless, that's what we're doing today. Again, with the school bus cameras, really alleviates us having to monitor that type of situation, it's catching everyone. So that, that's, that's definitely a plus. So yeah, that's, that's basically about it, I know we're going to be discussing.
Well, if I could ask you, yeah, two things, I have to say, there's no good solution, because I, I drive by a lot of schools, and even those that have drop-off zones, they back up into the street, because so many people drop off, traffic is a mess at any school at that hour of the day, no matter how new they are, how much of a zone they have to drop off, because they got that room for twenty cars, there's forty cars waiting to make the drop off.
And compound that if it's a rainy day. It's even worse.
Did you want to elucidate us now about our situation that we're going to be voting on later about the SPCA, because I know you have numbers for us, since you're up, so where, where we were before? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, going to school, yeah, there was a large dog that used to come to the trolley stop with its owner and child waiting for a bus. And people are scared, it lunges, it barks, it is scary, and because it hasn't done anything yet, then nobody can really do anything, but it's a very uncomfortable situation for people who are there. I haven't, well, today was the first day.
You're on a leash?
Yes. But.
But it does, it's not well socialized, and it seems.
But it's, it is not corrected when it lunges at people, because I stand on the other side of the street, because it's trying to get to my dog. And she makes fun of me, because I go, no, and actually, the dog occasionally listens. But it's just very.
I didn't see one out there today, so.
I didn't either, but we were really early, it's.
Is this at the trolley stop location?
This is somebody bringing their kid to Alden Elementary?
No, to, for a bus.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, I, I don't, we call us ever having any calls or anything like that, so.
Well, I'm calling.
It's an issue at that time, I mean, like I told everyone, just call nine-one-one, have an officer do this.
I mean, it's very uncomfortable, and I get worried, because who's had enough trauma? But if, if she, that dog could, could possibly get away. I mean, it's big, and if you're not paying attention, so if I see it, I'll let you know.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm, oh, Miss Snow.
Yeah.
Is that what you're called? Miss Snow?
I mean, unfortunately, they're, obviously, we all know, it's limited on the dog's leash, if it's, you know.
Right, I guess.
Is it, is it, you know, proper for a pet owner to allow their, that were to stand close to people?
I mean.
I would say the etiquette is not there, but.
When it, I mean, it lunges and people will do the skitter around, I mean, adults, kids, it doesn't, you know.
Right.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. It's not an Alden situation, but it's something else concerning. Today, I was coming up Providence towards Alden. And I know that, that Penpont, sometimes they let kids out, the buses, the school buses, so I suspect it was one of the school buses that let the kid out, and the little boy looked about ten at the most. And he's on the side of the street of Penpont, but down the hill. And he's trying to cross Providence. And you know how busy Providence is, it was very, very scary. And I know it's nothing we can do about it, I, I wished I could have followed him home and told his mom, you know, but it's so that whole bus situation is, is unnerving, and I'm sure that, because he had a backpack, but he was and I mean, for me pulling out of the street, I could talk to him. And then when I didn't pull out, I had my eye on him, it was in front of my car. But it wasn't one of our kids, but.
All right, chief, you've got, where were we, why do we have to change, and why is this our best or only solution?
So we previously, our animal control person that we had contracted, no longer provides any animal control at all, they're out of business. We are obligated to have animal control for our community, we are legally obligated. It's kind of, we're kind of limited on, on who you're able to go to at this point. Speaking with, and this is more particular with like stray dogs, loose dogs, that type of stuff. We utilize somebody now for our wildlife, his name's Alan Strickler, he builds us whenever we call to come out.
So like a wild raccoon?
Yeah, if there's, yeah, things of that nature.
Like dead or alive?
Yeah.
Not dead?
Yeah, well, no, he's come out for dead animals.
Oh, okay.
Deer?
You know, and stuff like that, so.
Surprising.
But, so basically, there's, there was two options, there's Brandywine SPCA, which they're covering a good portion, at least half of the municipalities in Delaware County, including a good portion of the communities or townships and boroughs around us. With the Central Vopper Darby, they have their own, we've reached out to them to see if there's a possibility we hunt, we have never heard anything back. So, but Brandywine SPCA, they cover Collingdale, Darby, Darby Township, Lansdowne, I believe, Yaden, Springfield, I mean, just a whole host of.
Most of the county.
You know, through Delaware County, along with Chester County. The other option is Brandywine Animal Hospital, who Alan Strickler is associated with, we would we were to go with them, they, if they were to, if we have a stray or something that has to be brought there, they only hold the animal for ten days, and it's our responsibility to find a home for it. Which is kind of.
We could have a ED side business.
Right, I was going to drop her off, drop them off in your house, but I figured Boo would have an issue with this. I have some playdates. Brandywine SPCA is twenty-four hours. Again, they cover half the municipalities in Delaware County as it is right now. They have sworn PA SPCA police officers that are working. They handle everything to everything, they handle animal cruelty, animal bites, anything you name it, they will handle it, they come out, they handle all. They handle investigations, they handle search warrants, arrest warrants for animal cruelty. Um, they handle investigations, they handle search warrants, arrest warrants for animal cruelty. Uh, the only thing that we would ever assist them with is transporting the subject that they arrested. Uh, to, um, to the. Processing facility down in Darby, they process the prisoners, they're already in what's called live scan because they already covered Darby, they handle everything. So, uh, they're sworn police officers, SPCA police officers, um.
That's great.
Yeah, there there it really is, um.
Listen, we're not having to, that whole, that whole thing, that whole potential crime.
Yep.
We can hand over to a separate specialized.
That's right.
BD.
Right, yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, so they, they're twenty-four hours. Their normal business hours are eight thirty to five. Uh, after hours is five to eight thirty in the morning. Um, some of the things here though is it's not cheap.
No, it's expensive.
You know, um, however, i- if they they require a five-year contract.
Oh, that long?
It's five years, a five-year contract, there is an opt-out. Um, an opt-out of the contract, the fee is. Uh, they average out with three months of the calls for service that we would have them come in and then that's what you pay to opt out of the contract. Um, right now, twenty twenty-five, their annual fee is five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Every year it goes up four percent.
Annual fee, not monthly fee, okay, right. Five thousand eight hundred?
Five, right now it's five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four. It will go up in twenty twenty-six four percent.
Is that if we?
Every year.
Oh, wait a second.
Five-year contract.
We are, if we're, and we're contracting with them, we can't do just the end of twenty twenty-five, we have to do a year from when we start. So if we start October first.
Correct.
It's all the way, and that increase happens in January twenty-sixth or at the end of our contract.
So the way it was explained to me was that it's the it would be a year at your anniversary date it goes up four percent.
All right.
Okay, um. Again, all this will be confirmed when we actually receive the contract to review.
I was gonna say, it's a solicitor team contract.
Is there, is there additional price for call?
Yes, I'm gonna get to that. All right, so. So.
Yeah, if it were five thousand dollars a year only, that'd be cheap.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
We'd be no, no brainer. Okay, so there's a couple of different fees associated with all this. Um, number one is if we call them to come out after normal business hours. It's it's declared a, it's an overnight fee, res- emergency response fee, that's two hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, there is a way around that and I'll get to that, um, but it's two hundred and sixty dollars for them just to come out after five thirty or five o'clock at night. Uh, obviously, that would be an emergency type situation where you have a vicious animal, vicious dog, something on the lines where they need to respond. Uh, and two hundred and sixty, right, two sixty apparently is around the, uh. Realm of a lot of their fees here. Uh, all fed- federal holidays is a two hundred and sixty dollar fee for them to come out. Each, um, dog, a cat, if they do cats as well. Uh, if they were to come out regardless of the time of day. Uh, it's a sixty-five dollar transport fee for them to come, they're they're coming from the Westchester area. It's a sixty-five dollar transport fee, uh, per animal.
Is that impacted by us? Are we heading to the falls at the resident calls, Brandywine?
Good question.
Or, yeah, I'm gonna get to that.
Yeah, I know people that call.
Yeah, yeah, so, um. Now, they do, when they work cases, animal bites, things of that nature, animal cruelty. There's a fee associated, cat fees is two hundred and eight per case, dogs is four hundred and sixteen. Per case. So depending on your caller.
So can I just clarify? So that would be, in other words, if the animal did some sort of an attack.
Yeah.
Not that there was, wha- wha- what about in the in- incident, uh, what about in the case of cruelty to the animal?
Still a fee.
Okay, and what, is that the same fee?
Yep, yep.
Ah, so, so whether the the animal was the victim or the aggressor, it's the same fee, okay?
It's four hundred and sixteen. Now, what a lot of the municipalities are doing. Is they are passing that, these, a lot of these fees on to the pet owner.
Right.
For restitution.
Sure.
Okay, so the municipality is paying these fees upfront for these cases for. A found dog or this or that, and the municipalities are then going after the pet owner for restitution for these fees. Um, now they're.
And they do that for us.
No, we would do that.
No, yeah, yeah, oh, well, I gotta come where I got loaded questions until he finishes and proposes.
Um, I already, because I checked with the municipalities on what they're doing and this is what they're doing, you know, so.
I don't disagree.
Um, now, so there's some things to get around this, they they basically go off of. How many, um, calls for service that you we would be utilizing them per month? Um, we would be then billed for that now. Every municipality is different, we average three to five animal.
Per month?
You know, per month.
Really?
Yeah, not not a an absorbent amount compared to somebody at rest of the communities. I think Lansdowne budget is like thirty thousand dollars a year for animal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, one of the things though, uh, for us, and thank you to Sue. For having the dog chip reader is that if the dog is friendly. We have a dog chip reader that we have in our station that we deploy, we're able to scan the chip. And it, and if the dog is registered, we're able to contact the owner. Which alleviates us even contacting the SPCA to come out for the dog. We have utilized that dog chip reader and we have done those those operations like that. We've only had maybe one or two that weren't registered.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, in other words, they had a chip, but they weren't registered.
So, a lot of, so having the chip reader really aids us because we're able to. We get on the portal, we find out, we, you know, the the pet owner phone number, make the phone call, this is where your dog's at.
Where is it? Where where are we keeping the dog when after you?
So, a lot of, a lot of times people find the dogs if they're friendly and and have them and they call, they have them in their yard or in their house.
Uh-huh.
And then what happens is we ask them, we're saying, hey, you know, is it okay if if we've, we're gonna make contact with the owner? Which, you know, we were able to do that right there on site, make contact with the owner, can you hold the dog till they get here? A lot of times that's what's been happening. Uh, if not, then it's one of those things of. You know, we would have to bring the dog back to the station while we contact the owner.
Okay.
If if they're, the dog is not chipped and they're or is not registered. Right this moment, we're kind of asking the people, can you hold on to the dog and. We'll wait to see if somebody calls about a dog being missing or plastered all over social media and stuff like that. So far, some of the people are are okay with that for a certain period of time and others are like, no, I don't. So I'm gonna get to that. I'm I'm gonna get some.
So, what what with the the beds that we have?
Right.
Dog bed.
Yeah, right, so, so one of the things too, um, that the municipalities are doing is. Uh, after hours, if it's a friendly dog. And they can't find the owner, what happened? Um, they're holding on to the dog, putting the dog into a cell. And waiting till the morning till dormant business hours and then calling the SPCA, thus alleviating that two hundred and sixty dollar fee for them to come out at night.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of the departments are doing that, which for us in our new facility. I don't, if we were to go this route, I would say we would do the same thing, uh, to save that that search room.
Yeah, inside those, those water.
And stuff, well.
The cells.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's, those cells are made to be housed out and stuff like that. Um, and to be honest with you, you know, it, if the dog is friendly. There's, I don't feel that there's an issue with that, um, obviously, if the dog is not friendly, is a vicious type situation or. Sickly or something, then we would have no other recourse to me, but there are ways to limit what we would be calling them out for. Uh, so the other caveat to this is that Brandywine SPCA. Um, also has to. Give us the okay for them to contract with us, so it's not just so like. So we can sit there and say that, hey, we want to do all this and then they can turn around and say. Now, you know what, we've, no, we're not gonna contract with you. Um, but most of the, they haven't done that with the.
I was gonna say, why would they reject the business?
I don't know, I have no idea.
We don't like your type.
Yeah, we've adopted from them and the exact same brand they have with families.
Well, that would make sense if they're giving the dog up, but if they're taking, do they charge us if they have to house the dog?
When they come to pick up the dog, we get charged.
I know, but they they take the dog back and then are they gonna keep charging us or do they have to keep it for three or four days?
It's all because that's your annual fee covers that stuff, so. Um, like I said, there's, there's some ways around some of these additional charges that I would say that if we were going this route. That we would do the same thing that a lot of our surrounding communities are doing. Um, again, the dog chip reader is a huge help, um, that will alleviate some some of the issues. There and has alleviated some of the issues. Uh, but the fact still remains that we have to provide animal control service. And we're kind of limited and Brandywine SPCA is kind of like becoming the only main game in town. Which is why they're covering at least half of the municipalities in Delaware County. Some have their own, Upper Darby has their own, Haverford has their own, um, but they're covering. You know, Ridley, all these departments all over and so they're down this way, you know, uh, if they aren't. Their average response time is usually about twenty minutes, uh, maybe a half hour, hour tops. Um, but I actually spoke to one of their officers today who, she's actually from Seating. So she grew up in the area and everything and, um, she, you know, she was in the case, she was like, we're always down that way, so. You know.
She's been reaching another before Brandywine, the other organization?
Brandywine Animal Hospital.
Okay, and you said that that's who you reached out and you have as a factor?
I have not heard back from them, I was going.
Upper Darby.
But they.
What's that? No, oh, Upper Darby, Upper Darby Township has their own animal.
I reached out to them, like spoke to their, uh, left messages with multiple people and no one got back to them.
Yeah, they're not, doesn't seem interested in wanting a contract or servicing, so. Um.
Totally, did you tell them?
Sorry, I just.
Your nation? I did. My cousin used to be the head animal control guy.
Really?
But he retired, or I would have called my cousin Frank and said, yo.
Right, you know, but it is, you know, our our previous animal control. Person that we contracted with, um. And he went out of business, he stopped there, we didn't, we weren't even notified. So.
Not, not exactly reliable.
To us, uh, when, you know, we put the call in and they're like, oh. He's advising, he's not doing it anymore.
He's advised. Chief, you mentioned that there was an opt-out.
Yes.
How long do you have to be in before you can opt out and how much does it cost you to opt out?
It is my understanding that you can opt out at any time, uh, that could. Still needs to be one hundred percent confirmed, I'm sure, you spell my contract. The opt-out fee is they go by three months, they calculate out.
So you have to pay three months, three months out? Over, over, so if you were with them for half a year, you gotta pay three months extra on top of that to that. How are we billed? Do we bill monthly for that? Is it an, do we have to pay an?
No, there's a, there's an annual, that annual charge, they can be billed. And then every month, they send a bill for every time they were called out, along with, the officers along with. A full incident report with all contact information, everything dealing with the pet owner and stuff like that for. Our records and also for the purpose of the municipality seeking restitution from the pet owner.
Sounds like another line item on the report that you find.
So Dan?
Police activity reports.
So, but you're saying that we would have to pay upfront for the year once this is approved on both way and then we would get.
Annual fee and then monthly when they call.
So when we opt out, they're actually gonna refund this money. If we opt out after six months, we have to get three months of money back, is essentially what it comes down to if. If I understand it correctly.
So again, all this, once we receive a contract, we'll be.
Well, I'm gonna say that when when Councilwoman Kelly makes this motion, I would say pending solicitor's approval. That's whatever I did. On on that specific, which is a very common thing to say, because we have not seen the contract.
Right.
We don't know, they may not like us, but guess what? We may not like that contract, even though it sounds like it's a good service and there's basically no other place to go. And I noted, looking up, they actually have three locations, Westchester, Plymouth Meeting and Newcastle, Delaware, so.
The the office that responds to Delaware County is from Westchester.
Is the Westchester one, Councilwoman Kelly.
If we are connected to Brandywine, would our residents who come across a stray dog on their own be able to go up there and drop it off?
Yes, and we will be billed for it.
Oh, okay.
How, so my other question is, do they, can they call Brandywine directly or do they have to go through nine one one in order to do that? How does that work?
So, while they call Brandywine directly, um. I would stress the residents to call nine one one first, especially when you're dealing with a dog. And so we can read the chip, if it's got a chip and go our route. Um, but, you know, it's just one of these things that we have to provide a service and, um.
So going by Councilwoman Kelly's question, uh. Dog comes in my net yard and I go ahead and call Brandywine because I think I know that they're the one. You, we don't find out about it till Brandywine bills us, they came and pick it up in the middle of the night, even without our approval?
One of the things, one of the things that I would request from Brandywine is that we be notified when they're coming out for resident calls. Uh, just as a courtesy.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that they're coming in, that we receive, so we can actually. You know, at least have an incident report on file on our hands saying that, you know, so and so resident called Brandywine. Um. You know, again, I would stress over and over again, you know, in hopes that our residents would call us first. They do now anyway, so, I mean, for everything. Um, you know, they call for rabbits.
Councilwoman Kelly.
So.
Another question, well, it's a question. Actually, the last two months with the lives, emergency animal group, we have been discussing. The potential need for providing local municipalities with. Like a medium-sized crate, bowls, no food, because that's not worth the time because you have to keep throwing. But just like a little animal care kit, the crate, you've seen my crate folded up, they don't take up a lot of room. Do you think that's something that would be useful? Because if you have a, if you have a chihuahua, they're gonna get through the bars.
Right, yeah, I mean, I do, I I.
There are no bars.
No, there's no bars, yeah, they're they're solid wood.
This is in the fifties.
Right. I thought it was. Andy Griffin upgraded.
That's a regular door with a slot for food in it.
With the window, the window, the window.
Oh, cage and and some crate would be, I mean, I actually, you know, thought, I had one, yeah, a large for a large, my German shepherd. Uh, I had a large one that it was in my garage and it was folded up, I was actually gonna donate to the department for these types of things and then I got a second dog. I didn't, but my family did.
Okay, you have two dogs?
But you have an eight by eight.
Yeah. Yeah.
You need to have people.
Yeah.
We're gonna have an open house, so we'll let, what could it do?
No, if 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 you're, if the groups are gonna provide that stuff, I would welcome any, you know, so.
Bonded, they can stay in the same cell together, but they might not be bonded like my dog.
Yeah, I mean, and again, that could be a situation of, you know, I mean, I would, I would be gladly accepting. You know, any donations for anything, things like that, so.
Just the bowls alone, since I don't think you have four bowls either, so. Okay, so we can at least work on bowls now because we have a lot of those.
Councilman Walker.
Solicitor made a comment, um, and something that we have to probably think about, the restitution.
I was gonna say, we need an ordinance.
I need an ordinance for that, yes. Yes.
What does that say right there?
Ordinance?
Exactly, that was my question. You think of it all, Mr. President.
I have to come up with that order.
Well, uh, so I would ask the solicitor to draft that ordinance. Pending.
Yeah, homework.
And as, uh, it's presuming we pass this tonight, as soon as the chief gets the contract, please send it to the solicitor for his review. So that we know where we stand. Um, yeah, I wrote that, do we need to have an ordinance for the restitution? So our next meeting, I need a motion to advertise. So our next meeting, I need a motion to advertise. Well, if if depending on where we stand, yeah, I put it in there for now.
Oh, yeah, it's on the agenda now, is it?
No.
Yeah.
No, but you we're we're allowed to ask you to put it together for us.
No, no, one hundred percent. I I was just, I was just saying, I was, it just popped the.
Popped into your head?
It popped into my head. I go, well, what if we just uh move to permit the solicitor to advertise it now?
I can't do that.
But it's not, it's.
Well.
This is a contract.
And this.
Immediately.
No, well, not only do we have to approve it and he'd have to approve it for us, but they have to approve.
Yeah, but but we're not.
We don't ask inspection, we're not allowed to use their services, haven't been. Right.
I can't see them uh bypassing additional.
Councilwoman Smike.
Clients.
The um residents would not know to call Brandywine, so if we did do this, we'd have to.
We have to provide educational.
I would hope they were called. We're gonna just tell them, call nine one one when they have a dog.
Thing is too, even on.
Yeah, so they can chip it, possibly, really. That's really what we would like.
Hundred percent. And even in animal cruelty cases and stuff, we get those calls right off the bat and then we would be the ones notifying Brandywine SPCA of an animal cruelty. Or potential of of that of that nature.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's how how it works now. Um, but.
What what if there was no contract and it was uh out of, you know, ad hoc call every time something were to happen? Because we don't, we don't, we don't have anything right now.
They're not obligated to come out and do it if we don't have a contract with them.
Okay.
Right. So. No, we have to handle it ourselves.
So right now, in the interim, we have no plan.
We have, right now, right now, if it's a dog and it's friendly, we go over and we scan it.
Well, of course.
And then we ask the people, can you hold on to it?
But I mean, I mean, if there's, you know, a a rabid raccoon or some other type of.
A raccoon, I call Alan Strickler.
But I thought he was out of.
No, no, no.
Oh, 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 sorry.
He's the wildlife guy.
He's our wild. We're talking two separate entities.
Gotcha.
You have wildlife and then you have other animal control, which is dog stacking stuff like that.
Okay.
Uh, this is mainly for dogs and cats.
And it's only because we, when you called recently to find out, to deal with the, hey, the guy's not doing it or without telling us. Great.
House caught on fire and that is it. Um, so, yeah, right now, um, we kinda just wing it for a call.
Which is why we're discussing tonight.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what if that is uh, those four, a couple of dollars?
Yeah, we have to provide.
Well, we're obligated as municipality to provide that to those and we could be sued if we didn't provide that. Knowing that we don't have the person that we thought we had.
Not be, that would not be a good thing.
No. Yep. Okay, any other questions regarding this matter, which we're gonna vote on later? I thank you for all your efforts and it's chief, I know it's been, and again, I just go back to the day when Delaware County SPCA, probably twenty years ago, twenty five years ago. Stopped taking animals and there was a big movement at the county level, Mario Severa was behind it, they were gonna build a facility at the. Training center, they had the labor people donating the labor and the and the kind uh the lumberyards are gonna donate all this material. And it was all gonna happen and at the last minute, I don't know what happened, but it all blew up. And it's been twenty five years and everybody's been struggling ever since then.
And and, listen, don't get me wrong, you know, there's other municipalities that are not happy that they have to pay these fees. You know, uh, and it would have been nice for Delaware County to have some sort of.
Well, it wasn't as if we weren't gonna be paying something, but it was gonna be much more convenient, it would be much more economical, because it was gonna be everybody together.
But yet here we are.
Yep, you gotta do what you gotta do.
So, again, I don't have that many.
We can't go back.
Desk.
No Mr. Peabody in the way back. All right, any other questions? You have anything else for us, Chief, on this matter?
Uh, that's it, that's that's all I have right now.
How are things with the movement? John mentioned that you're in the in, are you a hundred percent in and it's things working?
We're all on the other side and it is, I I mean, yeah, we're kind of uh.
Working the kinks out as well.
Working the kinks out.
Okay.
And stuff like that, it's the other, I mean, obviously the. Holding cell area and some of the and the uh barry, all that stuff isn't finished yet and everything, but um.
Just need to order chairs. I knew I was apt to.
Is there a cleaning service that cleans or is that up to, okay? I just thought of them like it's twice.
Do they have to be C just certified as well, I guess?
Yeah, he's.
No, because we have to be C certified to go into the police department.
They're vetted.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing else from the chief? Any other questions for the chief? Thank you very much for that. Moving on, uh, finance, Councilwoman Smike. Okay, that's good, appreciate it. Uh, any questions for the councilwoman? Seeing none, Councilman Borders, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have nothing of significance to report this evening.
Okay, any questions for the councilman? Uh, public health, Councilwoman Kelly. Don't forget to amend your motion to what we talked about. Okay, thank you.
Still all fresh in our minds. I would like to make a motion to contract with Brandywine SPCA for animal control. Pending solicitor approval.
There's a motion on the floor to contract with Brandywine. Is that Brandywine Valley, their official name, Brandywine Valley SPCA? I think that's what I see online. Brandywine Valley SPCA for animal control pending such as approval. Is there a second to that motion? Councilman Borders, any further discussion from what we've had recently? Seeing none, all those in favor? Eye and pose? Good, the eyes have it. Councilwoman Kelly, you're still on the on the clock.
This Saturday, September the sixth, that's just September. Emergency Services Training Center will be holding their Delaware County Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event. You do need to register, it is on the website, so please check the website for information on registration. And our next upcoming. Joint project with Clifton Heights, we will be having e-cycling and drug takeback here in Alden. On October the twenty fifth, from nine to noon, drug takeback can usually go till one or two. So. We'll see you there.
Excuse me, who's second that motion? Mr. Borders.
And there's no recycling at the Alden event.
There's no shredding.
There's no shredding, e-cycling at both shredding and Clifton Heights, drug takeback in Alden.
They can park in one.
Any other questions for Councilwoman Kelly? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Highway, Councilman Walker.
Uh, we've covered uh school traffic, lights and and whatnot. The only other thing I have is just the. Giant tree branch that's still on the uh fake batting cage that's over there. I just. I it's not gonna fall through, cross your fingers or anything like that, but if something goes in there.
Pig in snows.
So, so.
Any other questions for the councilman? You know, uh, there wasn't anything from Councilman Blunt for law and ordinance for this time around. Public safety, Councilwoman Lambert, Vice President Lambert, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything. I had my reports um at the council meeting.
Any questions for the councilwoman? Seeing none, okay, upcoming meetings. Let's see if we get this all right. I wasn't sure the first one's why I put a question. Uh, I know, is the strike commission having a meeting, Mayor? Uh, or did they push off?
To be honest, I think it's, um, I don't know that there's a set, I don't know that people are honoring the set date.
Right.
So.
Working at reconstituting that. Uh, the rec board is gonna meet here on Monday, the eighth, but at seven.
Yes.
Correct. Civil Service Commission will meet here on Wednesday, the tenth, at seven thirty. The Planet Commission will be here on September eleventh, at seven thirty. Uh, Thursday, the Shetree Advisory will meet here Tuesday, the sixteenth, at seven thirty. Then we will have our meeting on September seventeenth, at seven thirty, all here at the John P. McLean Community Center. I will, any privileges of the floor for our tremendous audience tonight? I thank the council members for putting in the effort for the work that we have to do. I will say, Mayor, I don't, and I'll ask Mr. Borders, because I was there last night, but uh the Legion is having. Uh, a remembrance event on Saturday, the thirteenth, which will be before our next meeting.
I will be there, I'm glad.
You wanna let us know?
Mike, since your apologies for not announcing.
Put them up at the uh war memorial?
Yes.
Send me something and I'll put it on the board.
Yeah. But it's on the website. If you can put on the board, that'd be great. And I already scheduled an email and a text.
Okay, someone send something to me and I'll.
Uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna email you the write up on the calendar.
That's what I need.
That all right?
So you wanna.
And I'll get it on the board.
You wanna illuminate the the members of the.
It's at nine PM on the third, nine AM.
Bring your headlamps.
Bring your headlamps. Nine AM, just, never mind. Um. Let's not go anywhere. Um, so nine AM, September the thirteenth.
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday. Um, Patriot Singular Day, not patriots. You, we all thought it was patriots, didn't we?
That's what patriots do.
Wrong. That's correct. I did too, buddy. You're not alone. So, come, uh, and I know that Senator Carney and Representative Boyd are invited. I haven't heard yet back. Um, Chairwoman Monica Taylor cannot attend, but I will be there.
So, the it's for remembrance of nine eleven and the reason they're doing it on the thirteenth is because. Uh, there are actually two events on nine eleven in the county, right?
One, uh, yeah, one is at the.
The county memorial, right out of what, Chester Pike, Newtown Square?
Yeah.
And that's.
That's it, that's nine AM.
But then there's one in East Lansdown.
Yes, and that is at uh six PM.
Right.
And they're rededicating their memorial to a former mayor, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Duke.
Yeah.
He was a fireman, but also he was a police officer and first responder. And they're gonna rededicate it, so they have, they're having a special ceremony. So, the Legion has tried to do it in Alden. On the eleventh, but they have, they're going to both these other events. They just feel that they could possibly organize their own, so that's why they're doing it on Saturday. Which might make it more available for people to come. I've done this for maybe the last five or six years, I think. They've done something. And they're, when are you meeting to march? Legion members are meeting at the at the Legion Hall at eight thirty or something?
Uh, yeah, I think we, oh, on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you marching? They're walking up Wayne. Yeah.
Eight thirty, we'll start walking up and you know, probably, you know, it's like fire engine parade following us through and.
Oh, good.
Walk up carrying the flag and and then uh arrive at the memorial by nine.
Very good.
And I don't think there will be a honor guard.
Oh.
No, no, no rifle sword.
Well, you'd be, you're being pressed in. I know they're being asked to help the honor guard in, as from my understanding of the meeting last night. In East Lansdown at night, that you're gonna help with the honor guard there. So, and you're participating, is there a parade of some sort or is it just a ceremony out at with on Newtown Square?
Um, no, I think it's more of a ceremony. You know, so yeah, they've got that, the big cylinder. Everybody calls it the cylinder, but it's actually, you know.
I'm happy it's on the website. I'm glad you got it set up. I just wanted the council members to know that they're invited to attend.
Thank you for remembering.
Yeah, well, I had.
My apologies for not remembering.
That's okay. Um, is there any, I I just have anything else for the good of the order here, Mr. Walker?
Are we still under a declaration of emergency for the um?
We haven't.
It's expired.
Yeah.
That's what I'm just trying to figure out is.
We have not.
It was a one month thing.
June sixth.
That was the last time we.
Is that the last time we did it?
It says from May sixth to June.
So should I remove that from?
Right? Renewed that at least twice.
From the borough website.
Yeah.
That's it's the.
It was about the uh.
The hospital.
Hospital clothing.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, so we we no longer have an, we're, uh, declare state of emergency.
Right, we haven't, we renewed it, I think, once or twice, but we haven't, so it's kind of expired. We it was protect us if there were any kind of funds that were gonna come out. To help.
Is that what that was?
Yeah, that was part of the reason.
And it didn't have.
We, as the county, it was talked about by the firemen, because Collingdale does our equipment, we weren't directly affected. I suppose other communities that had no recourse, because they were contracted with Crozier, was shut down. Not that they haven't had their services stretched a little, but we're covered still.
Yep.
Because we're in with Collingdale. Um, all right, at the moment, I don't have anything. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing nothing, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting, Council, Vice President Lambert and Councilman Borders. I could see his hand come up out of the corner of my eye.
No, it's always.
Uh, there, all those in favor? Eye and opposed? No, the eyes have it. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it for your attendance this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I've been wondering, with all of the organizations that we have in town.
Yeah.
Okay, but there's lots of good things.
Yes.
Okay. Nobody's got tax number. Is there some way that we could figure out an umbrella organization? You know, like, all, you know, all volunteers.
I think you guys, you guys at the Legion are underneath the.
No, not they're 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 not.
I thought they were under the Legion. I thought they're, I thought they were.
No, uh, they changed the.
John.
Oh. Me tell him.
They're trying to get.
Tell him to end the zoom.
A real thing.
We, we, if, what, as I was leaving, that was one of the last things that we were trying to figure out is how do we get our own taxes? It's a pain in the ass.
Did he cut it off?
Oh, no. Oh.